To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of all which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and free of any governance.
All right, roll call, Haldeman, Dr. Zen, do it up.
Here.
Haldeman and Kathy Bergman?
Yeah.
Haldeman and Kathy Bergman?
Yeah.
All right. Haldeman, the present form is made. Approval agenda?
We need to amend it.
Okay. We want to amend on there.
Um, we need to add new business.
Okay. All right. So we're going in motion to amend, a supplementary motion to amend the agenda. To add...
The purchase of a Salzberger.
Harlot Engineering bond issue, okay. So it'll be the Salzberger and then the Harlot Engineering and the bond issue, just to add to it for record. This is our motion. I'll make a motion to amend to the agenda. And those amendments to new business. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion may or second, Kathy Bergman. All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? All right, ayes have it, motion to pass amendment. All right. Consent agenda. Mention of previous meeting trade report, court report, bales repayment, city clerk if they previous property expenses as they're going to do a lot by budget. We should have you guys have everything in there. You want to go over and see what's going on? Have questions? Are you waiting for motions for approval of consent?
Yeah.
But the agenda was very old. They didn't approve it with it. You got your whole package there. Your financials, finishers. Collector's report. So, the monthly budget report posted here on the September 30th. That is the year on. And then we'll start, roll over to the new budget now.
Some of that's from later, Doc.
Yes. So, we get a motion to approve consent agenda. Motion may or second?
I'll second it.
Motion may or second, consent agenda, all in favor? Any opposed? Ayes have it. Mentioned it is approved. Public forum, anybody excited to speak? Okay. Let's see here, unfinished business. Uh, you'll see your packet, I'm sure, for the Jokers, David Cogel, for the repair of Cedar and Third Street, where that culvert system in St. Cole is after inspection from their engineer. And, that couple of things there. So, um, the dogs are larger than the complaint filed. Eight thirty-eight spruce again.
I just wanted to get it out of the way.
And another update after that, so. So, regarding the paving proposal, the, given the amount, the estimate for it's supposed to be $8,000. And, we don't really have the money for that either. So, uh, I... Well, so, number one, everybody knows we have an issue there with the culvert collapsing and, uh, the, uh, going deep, close to where the, um, biographics cables are, which puts a risk, uh, creates a risk for the city and stuff. So, uh, since we don't have the money outright to do this, whatever we propose to do, when we address the budget issue, we had some extra funds that we had put in reserves. So I think we can start saving for this, so that we can do it. And that way, it can be gone to clean without, you know, stress on the city finances.
Um, I think the hope is, um, that FEMA is gonna help us with that, but the process being as the government is where it is right now, that's kind of slowed down.
Yeah. Yeah. So probably, you know, like the reserves that we start to create, we can allocate, you know, change the heading to that for street repair, you know, Cedar Street Repair. And then, uh, as the money comes available, then we can, you know, pick it up and complete it. Does that make sense?
And we don't have a timeline as far as when do you hear something back from FEMA?
Um, I got an email today, says they're all virtual now, like remote, says they got rid of our people that came. They sent them home and they'll pay. So, they all went home, so now it's virtual. So every Wednesday, now I got a new person. But there's, the streets already done. It's just waiting for the government to finish up their part and sends the state, and then the state decides where this person must go where. On each one of them, ten item lines. Like the park was one, and then this infrastructure was one, roads one, culverts. Uh, I mean, on, on, you know, different spots or different project areas they can call them. So that's all we're waiting on is them. Cause I just got an email earlier, this morning, saying, hey, I'm your new point of contact, and he's in Washington DC. So, unfortunately, is, they just, they were working on no pay, and they sent them home. They were just here for the St. Louis tornado, and one down south, flooding and everything else, so. And I thought we were gonna have to save one, but they decided to do more budgetary cuts because of what's going on. They were almost pushing the longest, you know, government shutdown. So a lot of them are kind of going on, they can't survive, you know, so they're...
And they didn't give us an estimate, or how much they would?
It's based, FEMA has their own paid base scheduling, and like with our forced labor, they call it, we help, and everything that goes towards that amount for the contribution. So, I mean, there are numbers in there, but they're not hard numbers. I mean, each one, I can go down, but they're estimated, they're gonna go up, because they break down, even down to a nut in the ball, if you use it. Or if, like, one employee works six hours, they basically go off the federal prevailing weight scale versus ours. It takes it usually times two, which is about, you know, fifty-three dollars an hour. You know, so it's all based on their sheet coding that they figure out. And then, like I said, I'm just waiting on them. They send their findings to the state, which would be probably Hank Belker, or the, you know, the governor's office, and then that money's released appropriately to the places that are awarded at DAR, under the disaster assistance. So, that's all we're waiting on now.
So has the culvert, that has anything they've done with that right now, or no?
No, the prob, here, no. And the culvert, the only reason this is an issue is because there's been semi trucks driving down there, and I need to figure out what's going on that lot down there. And also, just the way the culverts are set up, they're all... But, it's about a seven foot void. You're talking a hundred... When they went down there, they had an engineer come down and estimated a hundred ninety-five tons, just to fill that hole. Because their spider optic A T and T, a sewer line is holding up the road. I mean, this is a, that's a bad spot. I mean, so, there's different ideas, where to go, how to do it. But then Joker saw, so called me and said, hey, we know you guys got budget constraints. You know, we've worked with you guys so much, won't we try to enter a contract or say, hey, you just pay us this much, a little time, if you can, we'll do the work, but just keep thinking on little projects as we go. That was another option, but I haven't got back to him on that. That's got to be between you guys, so. But that's through Tyler, and he's part of that, so. He's the one we usually deal with and does the other stuff.
So, with that being said, with all this bad weather possibly coming, what's our, the possibility of that being extremely worse?
If it washes out, and shut third down right there at Cedar. And then, that's, I mean, I'm not a, you know, I can't see in the future, but it's enough, me and Frank could fit in there. If that does anything, so, I mean, I can take my scope. We took that scope down in there, and it's just wide open. And it just keeps going, so, I mean...
What's wide open?
That void, it's an open void, like...
Well, how big is it?
Well, I take it it's seven feet deep, radius wise. They're estimating a hundred ninety-five tons to fill it up. So whatever you would take, I mean, cause it's...
Is it all under, is it under the entire intersection, or?
Half of it. Where the shaded area is, right here on this map, was, that's where it's at. And that's as far as we can get, cause it collapsed on the other side.
Well, and for safety reasons, it may be a good idea to restrict the type of traffic going through that intersection?
No.
Yeah. Uh, so that we don't have the weight on it. And then probably mark it with some cones or something, so it's, so you know that, like, it's a hazard bit, a higher hazard area.
And the Jokers did bring us some cones, because our cones are kind of obsolete, but their cones have trackers in them, since people like to walk off with ours. So they got new cones, they brought us, I think, ten or twelve, but they got those little...
Okay. We had some done, and visible, like, three or four.
Yep, one staff over there, that's all Joker's had their name on, and it has, uh, tags in them, so. Because people have ravished ours. So this way, Joker finds out somebody stole it, they're going for it, cause they paid for it, and it's been around cheap, so.
I think it'd be a good idea though, Doc.
Cause I asked him, and, I asked him, and, and he said, yeah, I'd love to shop and grab some, so he had some sitting out. I'm gonna ask him maybe for one of them long met wood ones, for pine bean, for local traffic only, it's somewhere down there.
It is good to see.
You know, so that way, cause it's, it's not good, it's just from, I mean, they're all clay. And so much has been held up, dirt, where it's rusted away, it's galvanized, so.
Oh, the earth shifts anyway.
Yeah.
So, who's to say what's gonna...
Me and Doc actually went up Cedar and looked at the difference. And, I mean, we had four to six inch differences at spots up Cedar, where the cutout is for the water line, so it's done, shifted down.
It's from Fourth Street down. You can see the depression in the road and the red sign. And up, from that point up to the top of the hill, or the mall, the antique mall, it used to be, there's like a half an inch or inch drop off from the road to wherever they cut into to put the lines in, way back when. But from Fourth, excuse me, from Fourth Street down, it's more significant, there's some settling going on there, so. To determine what's the cause of the settling, is it like the packing material that they put on the water lines? Or did it just, you know, over time settle more there from having dug it up at one point? Uh, but it's, you know, it's three to four inches of gap. When we put a pipe across it, measured down at twelve foot levels, and you can see the, you know, it's, from Fourth Street down, it's dropped out quite a bit more. And then maybe if there's water running down there from Fourth Street somehow undermining the road, that, that impacts what happens at Third Street, cause that's where it's headed, so. On the, uh, south side of the, or east, southeast, it's hard to say, compass directions here in town, but on that side, uh, that's where it's washed out to the most. And Joker suggested putting in a box culvert on the uphill side to track water and reduce the speed of flow of water during storms and stuff. And, uh, and then, if you look at the diagram on it, there's like one culvert that goes at a right angle under Second Street. Which didn't really make sense to me, because, uh, water likes to go straight instead of making...
Oh, you drew that?
Yeah. Drew, here's...
It's up to me, yeah.
Here's sixty-one, near Cedar. So they had this culvert going across this way, and this orange here was what I drew, and to have just parallel lines to go straight through, which made more sense for flows of U N's right angle, cause it's going in. So, uh, but I don't know, it impact, impacts us down the road. It'll be decided once they tear into it. We do have some culverts already in storage in the back here from a car job where they weren't used, so we'll have that available to us. And then, you know, the rest is just as the money becomes available to us.
The nine sixty-one, that's why that's collapsed. And, I noticed how that dip is, when I scoped it. You know, where you're, you're around, where she was. All I scoped is, put in, but it's, had sandbags. Somebody put sandbags in there to try to slow stuff down, but all it did was choke it up. So we took them out, and she has to. But, if you notice the county on one side, when we had that issue with Miss Sher, they did the gave in, but half of it's missing anymore. I mean, it's been like twenty years, probably, since that happened. But we have a lot of watershed, there's no wedge. Cause then we took our scanner, you know, and did grade. It's supposed to wedge off each side, not just come down, just... Cause what it's doing to do that picture is just slamming into it on both sides. And we got major trunk system, because I might call Dig Right again and mark it, and you're gonna like, see the white and the, yeah, orange flags, which is a high risk. And we'll get a high risk hit for five of them, cause that trunk is huge. So. And it could have been over the year seven, it could have been from ninety-three and up over the years, who knows? I mean, some of these pipes are from that air. They're just collapsed, and they don't build anymore anymore. So, we found pipes that never knew existed, cross pipes down Third Street. So, but they're done, I mean, you can't use it. They don't drain, they're above the drain, you know, so. That's the other thing.
And then, further than Third, in front of Crouppen's place, or Swole's status place, that's, it's always wet there. And I'm assuming that there's a culvert that's collapsed there too for the water to just get blocked and sit there, it doesn't run off in any, either direction, so. But that's a bigger problem, and this is like the key one here.
Would you say the Jokers would be willing to work with us?
Yes. I, we would just have talked to him and his family, but Bowman never got back, I call Diamond. They don't want no part of that fiber, because probably their insurance doesn't cover it, like Joker's. Joker's does St. Louis, and that's full of fiber, and the back there. And I'm sure if we had back there, if we did back there, they could see, open it up and see more, but what we can see now, it's just, something heavy enough is gonna go through there, and we're gonna have a mess, so. And what the ring just had, it just made it worse. So, yeah, they're willing to work with us and just keep going along with the project to help, you know, instead of blowing our budget, they said, and help for his, his mother, which owns the business now, or Emma owns. So they talked about it, they had a family, you know. Cause we've always had a good working relationship with them. So, um, and they go out of their way for it. I mean, they really have, they, they come in under on bids, and then they've had extra, and they went around and filled out, you know, cutouts, and did chart, they were just extra asphalt. You know, so. But they said they'd be willing to work with us, but I would have to call, it's up to you guys for me to, or you guys call, or it's Doc to call, or whatever he wants to do.
This sixty-eight thousand, is that for just that intersection?
That's for this whole street that really used, Doc. That's the ditch line, the culvert, uh, but see, that would change versus this, because when I talked to, Tyler, you know, Tyler said that he'd rather, with something as big of a magnitude, do time and material instead of just kind of head scratching, guessing, because you don't know until you get into it. You know, time and material and go from there, and hit the critical part first, and then start working on that. That's why he said, instead of blowing our budget, work some out with that.
Yeah, but we have to have some kind of estimate, you know?
Yeah.
What is, even in time and materials.
That's right here, but...
So is this, that sixteen thousand, it could be even more than that once they get in there freezing.
It, it could be, but even if it's sixteen, we tell them what we could pay them, and it's like, you know what I'm saying? That way, we're not overexending, like, this is... I don't know if you got this part?
I guess I don't have that part.
You don't have that part? This isn't my package. So this is kind of like what their rates would be, like most, so. You might have it in your package, it could.
I didn't get it myself. I can make everybody a profit with me.
Yeah, if you want to, so.
Things are just being special, Adam.
Yeah.
Talking to me.
Doc, you say the culverts that we have here, is that gonna be enough? For what, for projects?
That, I, I can answer, I'm just trying to get my head around what, uh, what's the... I, and the last time I saw them was about three months ago, walking through there, we were looking at it for some, for no reason. And I remember, I thought I had like two or three.
I think there's three. But they're estimating...
But there's a heavier one.
Yeah, SR fifty-fives, which are real thick, not kind of like that. But they put it forth, it's just like corrugated. But they're estimating, down there, where that culvert just sold it down and gave in, here I made a thirty-six inch to handle that much water that's coming off that hill, both sides forward and that, so.
No kidding.
Yeah, so what, for the city, so what, we're looking at is time and material rates, and they're in the, on average, the two hundred dollar an hour range for different types of equipment, and then the materials are for gabbing stone, inch minus, and screenings, which are not that expensive. But the labor, uh, labor and, uh, equipment rentals are, or these bills are pretty high, so. It's two hundred dollars an hour in a day, that's, you know, at least, it's sixteen hundred to two thousand dollars.
So then, if they were to start this, would one of our employees, or you, somebody be there with them doing this to, uh, to kind of, I don't know if it's a supervisor, but, you know, to watch the, the hours that they're here, or?
Yeah, I mean, I, I can check that, but I can't, I mean, if they're digging in like that, three oh eight excavator's a big excavator, you know? And, I think that includes, does that include in labor, the operator? I don't see an operator in charge here, so it's a better wage, so.
Yeah, it's on the corner, you know, so it's not anything that we need to have someone watching.
Yeah, I usually do check.
Say it anywhere.
And if I see something, like I did last year, yes, the plant closed, but they came back in the spring and fixed it, you know? So, it's just... And right now, we're at that time of year, this weather's...
So what is gonna happen? With all the time and that, what, what's the, um, the time range that they said that they would, how long would it take? It was, yeah.
It's unknown, because until they open it up. I mean, I, it's, he's looked at, their engineer came down three times. And we're both scratching our heads, I mean, cause he's estimating maybe three days, if that's correct, if everything works out right. But right now, they got spots open, they're just trying to beat the, you know, the mills before they shut down. Cause in your price that indexing will increase significantly higher, because asphalt BP one is gonna be really high, cause, you know, everybody's wanting to do their last minute stuff. So, that's why, and, um, I, I don't know. I mean, I can ask him, but if he gets down there and say, they find, I hate to say it, it's happened before, headstone, we're shut down. You know, tell somebody if you can figure it and verify that there's nothing there, it's happened before. When they put the worm pine system in, they shut the whole project down, you never know. Or they hit something, you know, it's not, we're all getting...
Yeah, I know, but I mean, on an average, for that sixty-eight thousand dollars, it's like, is that gonna be?
That'd be the whole street, that'd be the overlay, and fixing that, uh, going upwards, sinking, and then wedging, and then ditching down, gave in. That's why I said time and material, probably. Just, I mean, you can estimate material and everything, but you never know. You might end up with a whole truckload you never used, so that's why trying to figure that out, cause this is a hard one, it really is. It's frankly, nobody wants to touch it with all the fiber, cause it goes everywhere. From that hole, it goes all over here, across here, it goes to that building over here, which is about three foot diameter. And that controls all your air mat and funnel. You had that, you're done.
Something to do?
Yeah. And I mean, then it just branches out everywhere, so. You know, what it says on there, what timeline it would be.
No, I didn't see, I had timeline, that's why I was kind of like.
I didn't know, usually, this is the engineer's proposal, this is a little bit different than Tyler's, man. So, uh, here's.
What do we have in reserves? Still aside for stuff like this.
We have, well, as far as the street's concerned, we don't really have anything in reserve. We have, well, and then we have two, the two accounts that are dedicated to water and sewer. And then we have, um, what's called the wrong thing? And we have thirty-one thousand in a savings account.
That's from my caution.
Yeah, the purple white stuff.
It's a CD that's just in a standard low interest bearing. So we have roughly half of the funds for it, yeah. Yep. I can, I mean, if you guys want me to, we can, I can call them and see maybe if he can work someday. Because I can tell you exactly what, because he, he went over it, my center, but he makes sure it be grosser. I said, dude, we don't have the money like that, we can't throw money like that, we're not, so.
Yeah, but for the board to make a decision, you know, you have to have, I don't know, like some fat, some basis, you know, to make a decision. This, I mean, we've got an estimate, which is just sixty-eight dollars, and we have, the other information we have is we have about thirty in savings, but that's not enough to do the job, no. And if we go partial, then what are we talking about partial, are we doing like half the street? You know, like the area where the hole is, where you can crawl into, in it, on that side of it? And leave the other side and not put a box culvert in or, you know, what?
But he mentioned last, well, Thursday. He says, you know, they got openings and everything and he just kind of, he looks at engineer, they all agree, you know? I think there's a better way to do it, I guess. But, because they had a meeting and the family, so he said, I prefer to, I would prefer to just go time and material and entire deal. That way it's easier for both of us and we could just keep that going instead of bombing your budget. And I, and I said, well, what do you mean? He said, we want something here or there and then we show up and it's still time. And then it's just time and material instead of having multiple proposals to just, you know?
Yeah, but time and material, what does that mean? You know, like here, if you've got this equipment, is you gonna bring in an excavator, the two hundred dollars an hour, use that half a day and then, uh, and then use, you know, uh, use a paver, I think it's a completion of the job, it's two hundred and forty dollars an hour, so, you know, four hours minimum probably to get us a thousand dollars there. And if you do it just three days, as you estimated, that even at a thousand dollars an hour, eight thousand a day times three, that's twenty-four grand, that's way under the estimate of sixty-eight thousand. It's close to what we have already in savings. But if we get nailed with something else, then we're screwed. You know, like we don't have, like, well, you know, we won't have the money with that, so if, why? It's like, whatever the minimum amount we could do, that we can afford, probably we should do that.
He says he has a few ideas, but he wanted, you know, you guys and see what your thoughts were. You know what I'm saying, bringing back to him, and he said, he could do ten thousand hour increments, payments over time, so don't bomb the budget. Time and material, whether it's ten grand, three grand, whatever it might be, just to be able to help you guys and keep going. You know, so I don't know if it's a congruent, a contractual agreement with them to do so or what, I don't know. I told him, but it's up to you guys, it ain't up to me, so I said, I bring it to you guys' attention.
Yeah, I mean, well, speaking, maybe out of turn, but, uh, what, what's he wanna tackle first, you know, is it the?
The emergency stuff, yeah.
And, uh, does that mean that it's, you know, it's an intersection, so it's four corners? Does that mean he's only gonna do one corner, which is where the big hole is, that you showed me, uh, yesterday? Uh, and, uh, you know, once he digs in that, what if that spreads to, you know, another part of the intersection? He, he doesn't need to, they don't need to tear him to, so we need to have a conversation with them probably. To, so that we can, you know, go forward with this.
Can we get him to come down here?
Yeah, I can see what his availability is, I'm saying, I'll text him right now. Because he was in Rolla or something on another gas line project, that's why.
That would help us better, maybe, if he was understanding.
Because that way, yeah, like I said, because there's so many, you scanned a lot of these roads like last year and picked out, there's a lot of issues in a lot of them, you know? So. See if we can get that, all right, so. And I see with the culvert, it's a double A source, because like, and, like I said, you dig into it and all of a sudden another boy pops up and falls in. You're like, oh no, then what do you do?
Yeah, there's probably like a big hole and then it, you know, tapers off.
Yeah.
In another direction, but either way. Anyway, in the, the first step is shut the boat down as much as possible so that we limit our risk and don't have something heavy going to be there to collapse it. Especially, you know, if it's raining or whatever, but I'd start now so that we can, uh, put some level of control over that and reduce our risk.
And I, like I said, that we have a sign on, plus them up, it says Third Street Resident Traffic Only. I got new semi signs, this is no trucks over, whatever, no trucks, serious semi period, I'm sorry. Whatever's going down there is causing damage and we have this much of asphalt over a base layer. So we're just causing destruction on destruction.
Right.
And that's city property down there, I don't know what business is working down there, but I don't have a problem with it. If they would put a culvert off sixty-one and swing in, staying, I'd be staying off those side road, but that road can't handle anymore. I mean, or you're gonna have a full tear out and that's just fifty grand, just tear a whole road out. So, I mean, why would you? So, I mean, it's kind of like, what do you do? I don't know, do you know business or? Okay, I don't know either, so, that's something to figure out. Used tires, they bring used tires and go in a semi trailer.
Oh, I saw the, down here.
Yeah. Yeah. So I don't know if that, what that is, but we can't, it's not helping at all.
Yeah.
So yeah, definitely we'd get him in here as soon as possible, I mean, we don't wanna wait too much longer.
If not, if he can't do it by, like, in person, would you be okay with, like, Zoom? And then basically, okay, some people, he's all over. I mean, he's multi, they do multi-state projects, so, okay, moving on. Um, dogs at large, resident resident complaint. What is that?
So this is a bitten, dated complaint, October fifteenth, the dogs, multiple dogs, we're just tearing up. Resident's yard, leaving the newer, et cetera, from a neighbor, I suppose. So do we have an identity for the neighbor or is, yeah?
Yes.
Do we talk to that person or?
That one?
They just ignore us all the time and just do what they want?
This particular resident, they have been issued a letter in twenty-twenty-three.
Yeah.
By yourself.
Right.
I found that on, um, with your permission, I will date it and, and send another letter.
And probably, this is your department, I've had the job, so I know how frustrating it is, but. I, what I did then is I wrote a formal letter from the city, from me, uh, stating that it's not acceptable and, uh, and then maybe they got better for it, but obviously they're still doing the same thing.
And then Justin and I had talked about that and she said something about.
Yeah, and, uh, I, the animal control guy in St. John, I think his name's. Yeah, Michael Mark. Uh, he, he's a really nice guy, he, since we've had, you might wanna talk to him, like, since we've had multiple complaints and citizen complaints from the neighbor, that maybe, uh, it's time to, for him to come and visit and collect the dogs or something. Because they're not listening there.
Um, I also, and as you know, St. Jean County, they pick them up, but they give them right back to her. And I mentioned to Adam, um, I asked if maybe he could call the Perry County to see if they might help us. And he said they don't have, um, animal control, but the city of Perryville does have animal control. And he did reach out to the mayor to see if maybe they, they could.
Yeah, that reached out to us?
No, we reached out to the.
I reached out to them, so you've.
To see if they could potentially help us since we're not.
Oh, I don't think that's gonna, it doesn't make sense.
They don't have a very able one, it's a different county.
Oh, I mean, they have an idea, if there's a no kill shelter, maybe, maybe in Perry, Perryville.
Yeah.
Um, I, I, I obviously don't want anything to happen to the dogs, but I, um, this gentleman, when he filed this complaint, he's, um, a very nice gentleman, but he's obviously very upset, he, he has.
So every time, I'll tell you right now, so I, back in the day, filed one, um, Deputy Barton has filed multiple times with prosecutor and the court. And it shows each case has not been, it's just been wiped off, probably because she's in digit and helpless.
Well, regardless of that situation, I just keep on doing it, you know, keep on picking them up, keep on citing them until they get tired of having to go to court. To still go to the court to get the thing dismissed, right?
Well, yeah, you would have to go in front of the certificated court on that one, since it's a county.
Is there a prosecuting?
At the, uh, Mr. Williams, I meant Mr. Williams, that's over that, he's aware of this before.
That's a recurrence, he's not, and.
He makes his recommendations and the judge entirely is the decision maker of what happens.
So who would, who would hear the citation? That's just it, it's our ordinance.
But my, since there is a county where there's, um, one, a few, a three. And if it's the only large, he can pick it up, but he's so overwhelmed that time and the pool. And then he has to write all up and submit, and he's done multiple times, even with, um, hawthorns and browns, you know, and all those cases here.
So who are you saying, he, who is what?
Deputy Barton. Yeah, his DSN is eighty-five twenty.
So I would just ask him to do it.
If you need his, uh, number, uh, they have a separate number up there. The file prompts, it should be at the end of it, and it'll say for the animal control and it should order to itself.
Yeah, I just, I ask, just ask him to do it, you know, to pick him up.
And, you know, and also, I mean, I will sign an affidavit with our complaint, because I watched that brown one nip a couple people. And they didn't wanna do, but I seen it, so I'll be more happy to do so. That way he can rehome him and give him some behavior training, because that's a no kill, he does what he can. I'll say he does what he can, but, so, and they usually go out of state to different, rehome each other. So. So we'll just keep on this, I mean, it's, I mean, it's pretty much like a catch and release program, you know? Catch, fade here, do your release, that's what it seems like, I mean. And it costs the county money, it costs everybody money, you know, and then that's why they're gonna, we can't score, we don't have a climate control, we don't meet any of that.
But Adam, I'm willing to take two of them on, um, I do got channels, I will take two of them on, the two that does not bite for sure. I've been bit by that brown one. The little black one does not bite, and the old bus, busker does not bite, I will be willing to take those two on.
If the county animal control officer wants to speak with you on that bite, would you?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. Which you know Barton pretty well.
Yeah.
And I appreciate that, Connie, and, and Connie had, you have rehomed several, haven't you?
Yes, I have.
Yeah.
I sure have.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, and anything else, is, is this person wanna contact?
Rose is in contact with.
Okay, okay, I was trying to.
And I can contact him also, he, he just came and saw me the other day.
I was just trying to read, yeah, so, okay.
That's not.
So it knows that we're acting, it'll speed up.
Say what, I'm sorry?
Just so he knows that we're acting, city's acting, responding to his complaint.
It's not like we can, laws, laws have changed, animals have a lot of rights, they really do, I mean, they do have rights, you know, it's just the way it is.
They have some thoughts, hold on.
No, it's, it's, it's stummer, so. All right, what's next? All right. Ms., Cassandra Pacanu, is she present?
No, I just wanted to give an update on, um, my communication with her and the large water bill at eight thirty-eight Cruz. Um, I did send a certified letter, um, with our intention to place a lien if this wasn't resolved. And I also contacted our attorney, he has the paper work together if that is necessary. Ms. Pacanu has contacted me multiple times since the letter. Um, she is in the process of getting a loan to cover the full amount. She just asked that, her bank loan appointment is the next Friday. And she's still pretty close to within her thirty days of resolving this. So, um, when I spoke to her, I told her that we would give her until Friday, next Friday, to resolve it. She's been, and I've been keeping notes in our billing software, when she calls, what she says, it's all in there. And she's probably called three times in the last week or so, um, because she's very concerned about a lien against Trump home. So, um, she is in a lot closer contact with me and verbally telling me that she's making an effort to, to take care of it because she's wanting herself to home.
Right, so she's broken, she's made other agreements with the city and televised. She's broken them in each instance, so I hope that she's able to resolve this, um, till next Friday.
Next Friday, yes.
What's the total amount due on that, yeah? Is it still up there?
Yeah, it's, it's over four thousand dollars.
And if you speak to her and you ask if she's got an operator, somebody in the mall has their yard thing getting back up there, I would hate to hear that. Okay, all right, uh, so we got that. All right, um, I'm guessing subsection P.
I just wanted to give an update on that also, and just so the public. I just wanted to give an update on that also, and just so the public is aware, when you get your water bills on this month, they are estimated amounts. Our, um, meter reading equipment is currently out of order and on its way to Pennsylvania to be repaired. Um, I reviewed the bills and they're pretty close to what you paid last month. Um, and it's going to take one to four weeks to fix our meter reading equipment. So I just wanted the public to know that those are estimated bills. I did not do the math, it's software. The water bill software generates those readings as an estimated reading. Um, so if anybody has a concern or it looks excessive, please call me and we can do a manual read for you if it's necessary. Um, but I did review them, not that I can't miss something, but they, all the bills look close to what they were last month.
Alright. A new business.
We need to announce that you purchased this. Just to make the moment. No, you just need to announce. Like the note that purchased that. That gave all the, and it's given us two.
Alright.
It's just number, I don't know. I have no idea what I'm doing.
Alright, new business, uh, if we did amended, then a substitution of adding new business. Uh, we got a new salt sprayer, do the fact that our, our old one that we, last year, for some reason got somehow working and barely working, every block it out and turn with a wrench. But, and the register, I, with one of the gas powered ones, we got that going, but it was just chunking out salt. I mean, it wasn't consistent. And then by the time we got done, luckily we got through the winter and now the engine tank was hanging off the chain. But we're open, it's, it's been sitting there for, forever. So we got one now for, uh, from Caldwell's, living warranty for forty-six ninety-nine. And that comes with a warranty and everything, plug and play, and, no, and it'll, you can adjust your level of spread from five to thirty-one. It's about eight percent more efficient than what we got. So, and it's a collie, so collie will not rust, nothing, it's stainless, so it's not gonna rust like the other one. You're not gonna have that issue, and then you just, you know, put oil in there, just, you know, clean it up and, and it's simple. If you got extra salt, you open the hatch, instead of just it going all over the ground like the other one, or you have to shovel it out or, worry about the chain catching you. You back up and just open the hatch, hit run, it dumps it back in the pile. So it'd be easier on the truck, because the other one was a little bit heavy, but we also had it tied down pretty good. And like I said, that, that had a lot more engine on it, you know? Eric actually spent, I don't know, that night, we spent probably ten hours.
Is that called on the big dump truck?
Which one?
The salt sprayer.
The older, the new, the new one, that's fit for a Ford.
For a Ford?
About that one we got.
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just, because it fits right in there and then it all, it fits in where the pockets are and then where it don't hit it. And you can adjust where you need to be and you can set off, you know, right there, in that damn season, and just undo it, dump it, clean it out, and you're good. And where versus the other one, the change, the salt bait doesn't change, chamber and stainless, so the changer just made us steal. And we put pilling bearing, pillow bearings on it. We still have pillow bearings. We had to take it off and had to grease it manually, because it wouldn't take grease anymore. And then, like I said, you would have to get out, so the chain would get crooked in a bind and pull it back straight with a high wrench. And you can see on the shaft, I mean, it's, it's, I mean, it works, but it's not.
I'm like, am I trying to get hurt or something?
Yeah, or, well, then it dumps, once you do this, then you got a giant pile coming out at you, you know, and you got a pile of salt and cinders in the road, so.
So you're gonna get rid of this one, uh, for four years, I guess?
Yeah, we're gonna get it going, you know, pretty, I mean, it still runs and everything. It's just, we're gonna try to get it where it's decent enough for somebody that has a smaller area to use it on. They use versus a larger area, because, um, yeah, and this one, but I think was a, yeah, it's a two, two cubic yards, so. And last year, Eric, do you remember, Eric Gilvin?
Yeah, I'm over.
Do you remember that one? Was that, are they both two?
No, the big, the one we used last year is a three cubic.
Okay, so we had three cubic yards on the truck last year, that's me. So this one overload this one, and we don't have to stop and put gas in it, or one person's out there on top of that. If it messes up, popping that while we're driving around, so it don't fall off the truck, just to get the ice up and stuff, so. Or we're in the back of a dump truck, taking shovels, throwing it everywhere, so. And, now, you guys got any questions on that? Okay. And what's this department agent?
Yeah, I don't know.
Oh, I need to find.
There's an email.
Is that the one I sent you?
Yeah.
Okay. So there should be an email, your package is not letting help, so I can get you.
Clean water, state your voting fund?
Yes, so it's clean water, state your voting. So on this one, this is one of the, this is one of the grants I did?
Yes.
Yeah, so this is one of the re, older, you know, starting grants I did last year and, um, with Michael. And then did some follow-ups and everything, so I submitted it to Department National Resources based on, you know, the planning of a city project, and this kind of both water and infrastructure. So what this is, is pretty much is a contingency, it's a grant, but like a loan, but it'd be at one point five percent interest, it's a bond issue. So what this is saying, since I got the other one for the hundred percent grant to find groundwater and aquifer up here, for having a well and get away from these high rates and everything else. Um, so what they decided on us, because we have such a family infrastructure, they, uh, we, we don't have to use this money. If we have grants up to this amount, we don't have to use it, you know? But if we need it, it's there. So they awarded us eight point one million dollars on this one to bond up to, so pretty much.
Well done. Did, uh, this says that, uh, this contingent and, uh, and the report being done, is that?
It's already done.
It's already done.
Both of them are already done, so. And so that, say we get, I don't know, I don't have any grants, you know, they take that, and then it's, it's no different than the bond issue when they did that water line or whatever from St. Jean, which I think was unnecessary and just really a waste of expenditures, you know, because we run into a lot of problems. Knock on wood, this year, we have saved over probably millions of gallons of water. We've had some, but not that. But, so the state decided because of what our designs and then the clean water state reserving fund, it's essentially a bond loan, but then they can absorb the other ones and put it at one point two five percent interest versus what we're paying now. And we can get everything, you don't have to borrow up to eight million, it's just there, like I said. So that's the amount we were awarded up to on this one, just this one alone. Um, so it's, you know, eight million, one hundred eighty-eight thousand, ninety-eight dollars is awarded to us if we, you know, for water. Um, when you, anything, lift, you know?
It's great.
So, and, um. So that one, this was a big one, so, um, I'm happy that we were, we actually were fortunate. I've seen other towns bigger than us, like St. Charles, they got like two or three million, you know? But we showed them that we were disadvantaged in what our rates were, and so they understood. And we showed them we had possibilities and with engineering and the, the ground layout, the possibility to provide better resources and self-sustainability for the city, for future growth and everything else, so that's why they said, okay, you know, we want to do this. But this, just if we need it, we can borrow it, it's on account of all the rest of the grants, so.
But this is a bond issue that goes on the ballot in April.
Yeah, Michael, we have come in here for a public hearing, so the engineer will be here for a public hearing here and, um, this, um, I talked to him tonight, uh, he's gonna get with, back with me on a date. And we'll set it up in the paper and all over and everything. He'll explain how this works. And pretty much what sums it up, they take all, we take all the grant money, apply it to the projects. And then the bond money, if we need to, we can absorb the other ones, lower the rates and on both sides, and save a tremendous amount of money and then be able, if that works out up there, to be back in our own self-sufficient way and full sail and, and not be under a thumb of a contract of dictation, so. And that way, you know, maybe there's a progression there. So, and that'll help everybody, because I mean, this town is, the, always, it's always been raise a rate. That's been, that's been the answer to everything, raise rates, raise rates, it's no, you have to try for these or you won't get them. They're a headache, trust me. If I had one here, I'd rip it out, it's just, it, you know? But this one was one of the first ones I done, and it, it was long. Me and Michael, we turned in at the deadline, right at midnight, that's how close it was. So, but luckily, I mean, it's there if we need it. But, um, we still, we got awarded a hundred percent grant on the water for the water study. We've seen about the aquifer for the well. We have that booster station that they spent all that money on and never used, I don't know why. But that can be implemented with that, so, I mean, there's so many possibilities right now. And, um, here soon, once I'm able to, because I filled out a grant with, uh, working with Sandra Cavett and everything, C M R P C, I can't delegate or release anything right now. But once I get the paper, I'll be able to release something that's very beneficial. And, um, I think that, uh, because of my exposure, I can't, I mean, but it's nothing bad. But it's probably one of the largest things that this city's seen and probably, I don't even know, so.
Great.
But it should be hopefully next week, and I'll send y'all the email and then you can sit down.
So I have a question.
Yes.
There's a statement on here that says, um, if the city has not entered into a binding loan commitment by the end of the second I U P cycle, on September thirty, twenty twenty-seven, the project's obligation to fund will expire. Now, is there continued on what, um, comes about next April, and goes on the ballot?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have to do that.
It's a ballot issue for saying, it's not saying we're taking it, it's just saying, hey, the public says, yes, we want lower rates. Yes, we want better service and better water, you know, we want our own. So if you vote for it, that gives the board and you guys permission to use it if you need it. And then whatever the project cost is, then it'll expire at that point, if you need it. You don't have to use it all, you know, it's not like. You know, one town got seventy-nine million dollars, so, I mean, I was gonna vote this, and that's crazy, I mean, it's just astronomical. But these were the, those funds, remember, that they couldn't release, and that was, they were locked up for a long time. Now these are the funds they finally got released, so. And right now it's like, take it, because take it where you can, because I don't see proceed in the future. Michael don't either. Alright, anybody got any questions? Like I said, he'll be here to answer the public and everything, you know, questions on this bond, and how the verbatim will read and what it really, you know, it's not like the last one to make you pay a bunch of money. It's to, to actually get you out of that rut and get you better and lower rates and. Every, if everything falls into place, we'll be the only town in St. Missouri to ever, to have a whole new infrastructure with grants and this, and lower rates at the same time. And the history that he knows, everybody else has always had the raise rates. I'm sure Mary's still doing it like me, you know? But we would be the first ones independently on our own, so, which would be good. And it'd be good for the citizens, because it's a lot of them, you know, they're not indigent, but they vote, you know? They don't have that kind of money. We're paying.
Yeah, we got the opportunity to reduce our rates. Michael mentioned that before and said that he was very optimistic about that. So it's a really great thing for the city.
Yeah, alright, listen, alright, moving on. Ah, is there anything else?
Yeah.
Okay. Departmental reports, um, versus management, um, I'm at a standstill with FEMA right now. I'm still doing my FEMA homework from, you know, with the DRAs and through disaster relief assistance. So, I mean, I got one thing left and it's in the garage in there, and I submit it and I'm done. All the rest of them have been submitted, taken care of, so just waiting on them to give back. Whoa, the government opened up, so. Then I'll hear something. I have a Zoom meeting next week. I got it set up with the new point of contact. And he's gonna explain, hey, this is what's going on, I'm sure, and maybe it's an AI robot, I don't know. So hopefully this gets back going, because that way, because we were on good track on it and everything, getting approved, boom, 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 through Washington, going back to state. So I can't control the government, so that's where I'm at on that. Anything? Okay. Alright, well, we don't have a police department, so Doc, do you have any report on the police side?
Uh, no, and then the street department, you just mentioned, you know, the issue with Seer Street and, uh, and then I noticed the guys, uh, crew has done, uh, started hitting the sides of the road, so it's looking better. Uh, the, uh, I went down, this is a more near thing, wastewater, but I went down with the mayor, yesterday, and got a walk-through on the wastewater plant from when I cleaned it a couple of years ago. And it's, you know, it's, the back area is significantly improved, you know, the, uh, there isn't a lot of debris laying around. It's, um, easy to walk through and, um, a lot of the stuff looked like it's been shelved. And, uh, going forward, I think it'll be a pegboard system for tool outlines, so that we can implement, they use the tools to put it back in its place, and so there's no, uh, tiny ways to search them for stuff, because if everything is in its proper place, yeah, it's just returned to it. That's good. Alright, and then also in the streets, we reviewed, you know, going up cedar and the drop-off there. And then also on, uh, Ms. Shearer's place, uh, I think, uh, looking at the way the, the drainage plane goes there, she still needs, and it's on her property, but I would advise a small berm yet on the corner of her property to help deflect water more. a small berm yet on the corner of her property to help deflect water more, I think it's been improved from whatever uh, has been done for her already, but uh, based on the weird grays coming from two different areas, if she put a small berm, it's probably gonna be a foot high or something like that on the corner of her property, it'll help deflect water better down into this, you know, ditch that goes down towards her. That way, and I'll, I guess I'll visit her and have a discussion with her about that stuff, because she didn't take that much uh, effort to correct that a little bit more.
No, they're just, their over, it's not big enough on that side, they can asphalt it over, it's twelve inches, it should be probably twenty-four to match the other ones, the blow's just kinda going over it, so, but I think there's some flow, there's some mitigation work that can be done. Like you said, berm or drain tile under the berm, to get to that point where it goes through that.
Go ahead.
To keep that, a drain tile, you know, to get rid of that problem there, so that's something to, you know, look at.
Yep.
Anything else, Doc?
No, listen.
Okay. Uh, Frank's out here, wastewater, um, Eric, what do you got?
I mean, since we, since we've been having, since we put the new bugs and stuff in, plant's running at about a hundred fifty feet. If you look at our tests, they're coming back, they're significantly down from years prior. And we're not building any sludge, we can't get above two foot of sludge, we haven't been able to for about two months now. So, in all actuality, everything's going smooth like it should and everything's standing, getting as clean as it possibly can.
Better because that additive we got from the environmental company has significantly changed, flipped the switch on our uh, bug degradation
Right.
process, right?
Which is probably what's keeping us holding the blow right now.
Yeah, that's very good.
So, um, our T S, our P S S, any really suspended solars, all that good?
Uh, yeah, T S Ses have been at about three hundred.
Okay.
Which before they were right between six and seven hundred, so.
Water side, uh, grinders, how are we doing on that?
Um, we've had, we had to replace a couple, like, we just had to fix one, I, me and Frank had to finish one up this morning. It had an electrical issue, we just, as it been popping up, we've been taking care of it and trying to fix them as best we can without replacing them, because we're finding a lot of these old grinders are having issues inside the pits that can be fixed electrically instead of replacing them. Um, we replaced one, one grinder last month? Or two, no, two, we had to do one over here because it was an emergency because it was going over and then we didn't wind up at Mary's.
Which that was, may have been your contract, did it?
Right.
But we'll see, that's nice, so, and then we also did, we did the E one training too.
Yes.
In person, so, so we're working on level ones and twos, so, and also then, of course, on hand, we'll be able to work on these new E one grinders. Um, so if something's wrong, we can take them apart and if it's under warranty, they'll pay the prevailing wage to the city for our fine for fixing them if there is an issue, so.
Is there any certification, anything for the E one training that?
Yeah, we have to be certified and all the way up on tier two. They actually came out and did a hands-on training with us and then now we have PowerPoints and then tier three is even higher. You have to go to Torrey, Illinois and take a pump apart and they mix the parts up apart and you gotta put it back together and test it in their test station.
So what's, what is their um, recommendation, so we have to have, be certified, what level do we have to be certified?
Just two.
Just two?
Three is for motors, so everything externally, that would be two. And you have to have a minimum of eighty percent to pass, I believe.
And so how's that, how's that done then?
So, you start it like on here and you go through the curriculum and then you take the test, but you only get so many tries, uh, you know, like most places, um, and you gotta wait so long and then once you do that and get through all that, E one itself will send you your certificate as a authorized factory warranty repair technician, so you actually get that. Uh, you don't get the motor one unless you go over there physically, you know? And then you actually get depth of a lot of things and then you're a tier three and then you're a trainer as well, as a regional trainer, but what's good about this, we'll be able to have parts on hand, at cost only if we use them and then also, um, say we do a warranty one and it's no fault of ours and they will pay the city for the labor fine of what the warranty works calls for, you know, so whatever the warranty is, E one itself will pay the city for the labor. So that's kinda like, it's a good handle, I think, you know, it offsets some of the labor costs there, so.
So is there a tie, is there a timeframe to be certified?
Um, do they give us a timeframe or not?
Uh, eight months.
Oh, eight months, okay.
I am already, I have already completed level one training, so the test and everything for E one, incomplete.
So it's eight months to complete both levels?
All three levels.
Three?
Yeah, if you wanna do three, three's optional, two, one and two is mandatory. To be able even open up that thing, you can't touch it unless you've got one and two. You can put it in and all that, but you can't break it apart, but you have to pass those two.
So, I mean, you're saying eight months to complete that, all three or just?
That's all three, but the third, the third one is optional.
Okay, so basically you have eight months to complete two levels, you wanna add two.
Right, yeah.
Other than that, um, we'll be shutting down the U V room here at the end of the month and claiming to have, sure, and everything does have the time of year. Whenever Frank decides, he couldn't be here tonight, he has some personal things. Uh, other than that, it looks good, talked to Michael, it may be a St. Clair or St. James is having problems with their plants since our bugs are so good and eating everything. We might have him come down and just get a truckload of it, since they mutate and everything. So they can take it up there because they're having sludge problems like we have.
No, mutate, they multiply.
Okay, they multiply. And so, anyways, so they, so if they need them, I told them, they come down, we can go where their plant is set.
You don't want any mutating.
No. It probably will be great, I ain't never seen it like this, but.
How many take our B C?
I don't know, I ordered this batch and it just cleaned everything, so. But uh, other than that, I don't have anything on, you know, other than what's on the list, we've been working on that, the water sewer up there. So, great, all right, uh, park and cemetery, Rosie?
Um, I'm just kinda checking the things out with the guys and um, the employees have been kinda keeping that cleaned up. God, they took the debris away that was down there in the parking cemeteries. Um, I am a little concerned about, there's a big tree that's still in the park.
Probably picking that up, let a guy come in to get that out of there.
Okay, he's gonna take it then. But other than that, it looks pretty good. I think they're pretty nice down here, so um, same with cemetery. Um, did we find out anything about the gate being locked as far as, is there?
Um, I ordered a sign, just came in today, it says, it's closed from dusk till dawn.
Okay.
I'll just take the lock off, but anybody gets caught up there, and they're not supposed to be there, is what it is.
Does the sign say that too?
Yeah, I mean, and, and that's also on the other side, but uh, Mr. Schwinn's passed on, I need to find out if he was actually in charge on that side and he was taking over, um, but yeah. Uh, it just came in today, I just gotta figure out where to mount it on there, where it won't desecrate that, you know, folder. And so I may just put it on four by four and build actually a sign and do like they did, so, that area. Well, like rules, regulations, whatever you have, so.
I would also like to see a barrel put up there, like outside for trash.
There was, where'd they go?
There's a, there's a barrel on those signs.
There's a barrel on there, okay.
They were chained, I was like, weren't they chained?
They weren't chained, but they're there.
Okay, I was like, I just seen them.
I know, I'm looking for it when I went up there, I walked, I just wanted.
They might have dealt them, cause I know somebody went around and was probably on the other side of pulling like the flowers and stuff here. So, the only thing I have, do you have anything else on there or?
Um, yeah, I can't.
Um, what's in there? The cross, the cross.
It's in the ground.
They got destroyed.
Um, the shack, the door.
Um, uh, uh, yeah, the hair tape, here we're gonna figure out some of that shit. Uh, Ms. uh, oh, I forget what I was saying, Lloyd Allen.
Oh.
Lloyd Allen, Ms. Allen, Lloyd Allen's wife is upset. So she had a, a very expensive, or I guess an Orthodox cross made and it got cut in half. And it was next to a tombstone, so I don't know what happened, who did or what, uh, I gave her my number because she was crying upset, so I'm probably made to go out there and see, but I don't know what happened, if they got too close or what, but she had it made.
Is it vinyl or cement or steel or?
It's like a rod iron, it's like a.
Cast?
Yeah, yeah, I don't know if it's anything.
It's cast, it might be, I could maybe weld it with a nickel rod, you know, to repair it, to reinforce it for.
I think the cost, don't quote me on it, but I think, uh, when I was trying to just kinda calm her down and get to it, was over fifteen hundred dollars.
Yeah.
You know, so I'm just.
I could go with you to take a look at it tomorrow and see.
She took it home, so I don't know what's gonna happen, I'm gonna just, I've been trying to give her a little faith right now.
When did, when did she call you or when did Kenny talk to her about that?
Um, Dave Jeff came down, cause she flagged, came down, Dave Jeff was there and she didn't have my number directly, he did. And that was, I wanted to ask you about that, do you remember?
Yes.
Yeah, last week, early in the week, I can't remember, Monday or Tuesday, and uh, so I called, she was upset, so I'm like, I wasn't gonna push the issue, I just told her, you know, I went out here, we gave her card, I gave her my card and told her, call me when she's ready, you know?
But nothing else was damaged, just that, I mean, was it some favorizing?
No, it's, it's mowing.
Okay, okay.
And, and the tombstone's got a nick in it too, so, but I can fix that, I think, with some of the, there's a repair. So we gotta watch what we're doing, if we're getting close, especially if they're using my mower, I have an edge. Part of my deck is factory cut out, so you can get close, you know what I'm saying? And it will destroy anything you hit, I mean, it's got some brush plate type things on there.
So when was the last time this cemetery was mowed? You guys mowed it?
I haven't mowed a cemetery since that one day.
Let me find it up here.
Well, I mean, if it hasn't been mowed since Mike, Mike's been here, it's been at least two weeks.
Two weeks, I mowed the cemetery last, it says, let me see.
It was a Friday night.
Yeah, it was a Friday and then.
Well, it wasn't time clock, it's just a little town.
I'll have to bring it back open, on open time clock to figure out and see who was doing it at that time frame in that period. Either way.
It was ten eight or ten ten.
Yeah, because in between that timeline, so it, it doesn't change the fact of what happened. Whether or not, we just gotta be careful and not hit things that, that's, that's a very sacred area and people will take that really serious and especially, you know, when somebody spends that kind of money and then they find it desecrated, you know, I can see that why they're upset.
And we, do we know, do you all not know, excuse me, do you not know what the cross was made out of?
She took it home and.
You don't know?
She, I wasn't pushing, but.
Not at that point, right?
You know, she was at the straw, I'm not gonna, cause I haven't, I, what I know is it took a while. And Dave Jeff said she'd ordered it and it took a long time to get made, so it's a custom-made piece. So I don't know if it's an Orthodox rump cross, I have no clue, I have no idea, so, and.
Is there anything that we can ask her, maybe we can get a picture of it?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna go out there.
Why don't we just call her daughter?
I guess I could, if she knows, you know, I guess you gotta remember, cause I got, you know, it's like, I guess I could call her, yeah.
We just call Ken, Ken will tell you, or I will, I don't mind, I know her.
I just wanna know what, what it is.
What it was made out of.
And what, you know, just. You know, it may have been not, not just, I don't know, she took it with her, so that's her prop, that's her property, that's her right.
Well, we don't wanna upset if something could help this.
You know, and when I went out there, I wasn't pushing the issue, I just told her, just call me and we'll figure it out. If she wants me here, wherever, graveyard, wherever, I don't care, so, cause I wanted to look at the end, cause I'll be able to tell if it was hit by a blade or what, whatever broke on it, so, but yeah, I just wanted to bring that up. But, so, that's all I have on that. Okay, um, is there anything for you guys, anything to come forward? Nope, just for me, nope, 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 so I have no for everybody, moving on. Citizens' participation, uh, anybody have anything to say?
Why do we have a chamber of commerce, aren't they supposed to be helping, you guys did?
They don't seem to interact that much with the city from what I've.
But they helped in the past, how come they're not helping now?
Probably because the prior mayor was a member of the Chamber of Commerce.
That shouldn't matter.
I know they have a unique, that chamber has a unique uh, structure. When I've asked other chambers about our chamber, they all put their hands up in the air, saying we've never seen anything like this before. That's all I got, but.
It's a good answer.
Is that the best way to explain it?
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, you could just ask them.
Well, why'd I ask them, because last mayor here likes to fit the people, I've asked him about it before and pretty much got the fear.
Do they have an office that she could visit or, oh, no, the office is on Eighth Street. And that's where the president is, right, ain't it? Land and silver that and.
I think so, that's what, I would have to look.
Maybe we can send them by and make them have like a, you know, public, explain what they do, I mean, Chamber of Commerce should help the city, I agree, every other place does. But I think Doc said it pretty good, you know? Cause we don't know, cause they don't talk to us, so.
Okay.
One more subject, thank you guys for the less water bills that we have. I'm not trying to be ignorant, considering mine for ten years is over five hundred dollars and just the two of mine together makes only a hundred dollars and I'm just, you know, regular ones, not the new ones either. The regular ones is only about a hundred dollars or so, so I'm not gonna complain about the water bills.
It should be better to actually run, yeah, we have to go up, but we think they're gonna go down, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's just part of it and.
We're not the only, we're not the only city, period, I'll get, I can do, there was a K bar, you just.
I personally, where I live, and I won't tell you where I live, my water bill for three months was fifty dollars. My sewer bill for three months was two hundred and forty-six dollars.
What are you putting in here? What are you putting in your sewer?
They was a big deal.
It's a USDA loan, but then we're paying the bill.
Yeah, you are.
We're making a payment.
I remember you had.
We're making a payment. But, yeah, so, I mean, all of us have something to complain about. I don't think I used to on the forty-six dollars for the sewer, however, I do have to pay it.
Right.
But I'm not complaining after all this year.
I'm complaining.
Everybody else?
Uh, yeah, I would like to do a water meter check on my place. Our bill's about one thirty right now, even when we were out of town for two weeks.
I remember some months before, explain how that is not the month now, it's the month.
Is it still previous months?
So, like, the, the bill that I just sent out will, all right, well, it's not for the previous month. It kind of did, so, we read meters on the twenty-second of September. And then we read meters again on the twenty-second of October. So that is the bill that is due on November the tenth. The water you use between nine twenty-two and ten twenty-two is what you owe for November the tenth. So it is, it is behind.
We have one thirty, ours is one thirty.
So.
Well, the month that we're around for two weeks out of the month and then previous month, uh, month after that, the water bill is about the same, we run in Hummer and water. That's why I'm concerned.
Is that ten fifty?
Yeah.
I'm limited to me.
Well, you can't, you can't look this time because it's not.
Yeah, I'm just on that.
Well, and did you get, are you talking about the water bill that you just got in the mail? No, okay, because those are estimated bills.
Yeah.
So, we, we can't, you, yeah, okay, well, you're not talking about that.
Okay, I see, which means it made through customer four, so, okay. What if it's still?
Twenty-one?
We only should have wondered because Eric was all. I don't know how it fits.
Well, actually, what this is just the, the increase.
Okay.
So if you're paying one thirteen twenty-seven, you mean it's for August, the one thirty-one fifty-two is gonna be your average bill.
That would be average then?
Yes, one thirty-one fifty-two is gonna be the average bill.
That is fifty-eight, yeah, fifteen percent. What's that one, two hundred, did you have a lead in that?
No, he did.
Oh, okay, they just said two hundred, so.
I think that you're just a little behind.
I'll just check, I'm sure that's looking to be a little, but I mean, I can check it, I didn't know. So, I'll get it, just give me a little time, I'll pick it up.
Well, it's not like it's coming anywhere.
No, no, that one used to shock me because the eighteen, thirteen, quarter, that was fun.
What's the side dressing?
Ten fifty-third. All right, anybody else have anything, would like to speak? Nothing? Going once, going twice? Oh, all right. Appreciate everybody coming on.
We're mostly two turn.
Uh, we have a motion turn. Uh, second to adjourn, are we going to close?
If you wanna take a break, you actually have to.
All right, um, we're gonna adjourn the meeting and go into recess and then open to close. There's, we're, are you there for a second?
There's Matt and Doc, Doc and Ken.
Okay, on favor? All right, any bows? All right, eyes have it, close.